... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call members?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Yeah.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Geer.
And I adjutate a motion to approve the minutes of your last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not on face of it, we approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or oppose. Minutes are approved. Now have a petition, uh, sort of presentation of petitions, communications, and notices, and general question period from every community. I see we have, uh, the legislator, Aaron Ramonis, here tonight. Do you have a...
Well, I prefer, I mean, if people have things, let them go first, it's fine with me.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to address to the board? Could you please state your name and address?
Uh, I'm Rudy Johnson, and, um, I'd like to thank for you, I think we should be on the agenda tonight. Uh, I am the candidate, uh, the Democratic candidate for the 114th, uh, New York State Assembly District, and I just wanted to come here to address the board, and I thank the mayor and the trustees for allowing us to do that, uh, to introduce myself, uh, tell you a little bit about me, and also, um, get some feedback and some, on what your concerns or issues, uh, and what you're looking for as far as the, who's representing you in Albany. Um, I am from Malone, have been here, uh, for quite some time, moved up over twenty years ago, uh, went to work for, uh, Cornell University, working out of the Malone Cooperative Extension. Uh, at that time, I was an energy analyst, doing a lot of, um, uh, energy audits and analysis, uh, for farm, small, uh, dairy farms and small businesses, and developing techniques that they could, uh, reduce their energy consumption. Uh, we were doing that in conjunction with the State Energy Office and the PSC. Uh, we did most of the farms throughout the North Country, um, all of Essex, Clinton, Franklin, St. Lawrence County, Jefferson County. Uh, and we were able to, uh, through initiatives and some grants that were provided by the state, we were able to save a lot of small businesses and farms a considerable amount of money. During that period of time, I got to learn a lot about the North Country and the culture and a lot of the people, and a lot of, uh, what concerns most of the people of the North Country. Uh, we, my son grew up here in the North Country in Malone with Franklin Academy. Uh, uh, one of the things that has prompted me to run for, uh, this election was, I'm very dissatisfied and very frustrated with what's going on in Albany. I think that, uh, one of the biggest concerns we have is getting our budgets passed on time. Um, one of the things that I intend to do is visit as many, uh, villages and towns as I possibly can. In fact, we started, uh, a little over a week ago, and we started in Rousas Point, we've been to Rousas Point, Danamora, uh, Brushton, Constable, several. We've also been to several events, uh, field days, and a lot of the other local events that have been going on, and we intend to continue this, uh, throughout, uh, July, August, and part of September. Um, the biggest frustration that I found that especially a lot of the village and town boards are concerned with, with that budget not getting passed or not, uh, they have no idea when and how much money they're going to be designated for a lot of the things that, uh, you know, local municipalities are concerned with. Uh, one of the big issues in Constable, for example, was your CHIPS program, um, to complete a lot of the highways that they had designated for, uh, for completion and improvement. Um, one of the suggestions that I heard that I thought was reasonable was that because the state's been coming up very late with some of these budgets, that perhaps some better planning needs to be done, uh, perhaps on a three-year basis, so that if the budget becomes late, at least the towns and some of these villages will have an idea of what they can expect and start planning, uh, those roads that need to be done. Uh, we've had some problems in funding of our nursing homes, uh, some of the, uh, school districts, uh, there's a lot of things that Albany affects all of us here in the North Country as far as how we have to run our, uh, small districts. Um, that's just some of the concerns. I believe that I have a lot of ideas, uh, when it comes to what needs to be done. I also believe that it has to be more than just, you know, you being a vote to represent, you have to be, uh, someone who's willing to listen to what the concerns are of the people, and you have to be able to go down with a very strong influential voice to Albany and try to represent the people up here effectively. That's what I want to have the opportunity to do if I'm so given that chance. Uh, so my, my whole objective is to look, get around to all of, uh, the towns and villages in this district, meet as many people as I can, you know, do the footwork, get out, uh, and really talk and listen. Listening, I think, is very important. I need to understand exactly what the concerns of all the, uh, small municipalities have, and what, uh, every little town and every little area of the district has some little nuances that are different than others. Uh, so I welcome you, and I'm willing to take any questions and listen to any concerns that you may have, uh, in, uh, in carrying on with my campaign. Anyone have any questions they'd like to ask me?
I did, well, thank you for coming, uh, we appreciate it, anytime somebody comes to our meeting and, uh, you know, shows enough interest to be here with, you know, small village.
Well, thank you very much. Um, one thing, uh, Mr. Gury is handing out, uh, um, some flyers that, uh, have our information. If you have any questions or concerns you'd like to express to our candidacy, please feel free to get on to, uh, our website, and, um, we will respond as quickly as we can with what our ideas are concerning any of your feelings. And I appreciate, uh, having the opportunity to come here and talk to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You go.
You may go.
I want to hear.
Want to hear?
Remember you.
John Southwood, representing the Champlain Fire District. Two items, one I've already talked to Larry about, is that two of the hydrants were hard to access, a couple of the ports, the boys had trouble, boys, it's girls too, we've got girls in there, they're doing a fine job too. Had a hard time opening up the cap to get at the water. And I've talked to Larry about this today, and I think we probably have, and have both to, to correct that, so I don't think that's a, anymore now, but we're going to talk more about it later, and you're going to talk the things that maybe the villages ought to do to help with this. The second item had to do with hearsay.
Okay.
Okay? Hearsay. The hearsay is that, uh, you are going to install a water meter in the firehouse. And, uh, our concern is, number one, what would be the reason for this? And then the other would be, as part of that, again, hearsay, is that you're going to be charging the fire district for utilizing water to fight a fire. Now, that's all hearsay, and I'm sorry to bring it up, but that has no justification whatsoever.
If there's hearsay, it needs clarification, so.
And as part of this, I wonder, Jeff, if somebody from the board, if you would, or somebody in the board would consider being a liaison to the fire district. The town does it, uh, and it would, uh, we meet third Tuesday of each month, so that if you see fifth, uh, we would certainly appreciate that, and, uh, then we could discuss those things at that meeting, and if necessary, have one of our guys come back or, Jeff, no, there are no, there are no gals on the fire district yet, so, yeah, so that if there is some, uh, direction that way, we would appreciate somebody there to, to discuss some things that come up that may not have any credence at all, like this business of utilizing, uh, water and being charged for it.
Okay, to answer your, uh, last question first, uh, yeah, that's kind of slipped through the cracks, our liaison before was Steve.
Now, he's doing it for the town.
So, so we, yes, we need somebody in, in that capacity, so I guess if there's anything, anybody need, to keep the community lines of communication up. The reason that we need to put a meter in there is the Department of Health is questioning the amount of water that we're making versus the water that we're drilling. We have about half the water that we make is not being built, so they, they look at it like you've got some big leaks here, or just not keeping track, and I suspect it's, it's a number of things, not any single thing, because we, we need to get a meter up at the border, but the purpose of this is to identify to the health department, this, you know, we're, yes, this water isn't, you know, due to a, a big leak somewhere or something. So they want us to, to kind of have a better handle on where all the water's going, so that is the purpose.
There may be a little paranoia on their part, thinking that one of the perks of fighting fires is allowing our firefighters to wash the vehicles at the fire station. And I think it's tough enough now to encourage people to come and be a firefighter or EMS provider, and if that's one of the things that helps out, I, I don't see a problem, but that would be something we should discuss later on with the full group, if you want to send something.
Yeah, it's not our intention at this time to do anything with, with the building, the purpose is, is to identify where all the water's going, and we're going to do the same thing, we're going to calibrate all our meters going out to the town districts, so that we can show that we all, yes, the water isn't just disappearing or evaporating, and I know where there's some places and other places, it's not just one place, it's several places, we put all the pieces together and say, hey, you know, the water is actually going somewhere, it's not a big leak. I guess that's the way they tend to look at it.
Well, that's fair.
To them, it's mystery water, we need to be able to tell them where the water's going.
Everybody goes to our study meeting that we're having on Wednesday, that will be addressed.
That will be addressed.
Because that was in, because that was one of the problems in the study too, is what they suggested that we do, to find out where the water is flowing.
Any department that spoke to municipal line has a meter on it. I mean, back when the fire department was built, that was a village fire department. If, and you go to town Peru, they have a meter, you go to town, it's town of Oxford, they have a meter. It's just the, the, so, when we do our annual water report, we're accountable for how much water we use in there, then we know how much water we got for leaks out in the system. Makes sense?
Yeah, that's the, really the driving factor is, they want us to account for a lot, so.
And this first item, you're going to bring up at a separate time, with the board, and see if...
I think I should get with you or John Philmy off, and we'll have to find some potable lubricant to put on that, because it does go back to this.
You need to announce, you need, um, food safe, never seize.
Yeah.
That's what you need.
And I think, I think it, because right now, we're, we're working on Elm Street, and they go around and do every hydrant at one time, I think pick up Monday nights and Wednesday nights, work nights, pick a night, we'll supply the stuff, they want to work hydrants, I mean.
That stuff works very well.
That would be something that you could also, if you hit somebody, or were willing to, I'm sure you are, it sounds like you are, have somebody visit our little, uh, committee meetings, and, uh, we're easy, we're easy.
John, what is the meeting again?
Third Tuesday, seven o'clock of each month, at the fire station.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get somebody to visit.
Thanks. See you guys later. Yeah, maybe I should stay and hear what Harry's got to say.
Well, I, one thing you might be interested.
All right, I'll say it, I'll sit, maybe listen to, uh, what Mickey's got to say too, I can learn.
Not much. I got one. Oh, yeah, I have, we have money.
Oh, yeah, I found that out. I found that out.
Okay. Let me start with number five, just because, and those only, these are all small, but just because, uh, the report was just made, you know, one of the concerns that I heard on the campaign dealt with the issue of retention of firefighters and so on and so on, and I mentioned this before, but the good news is, the legislation that I proposed at the county level to give all firefighters a 10% tax break on their taxes, actually passed the legislature and the senate. However, uh, the governor is another story, and I'm not sure, because he's looking at this, unfortunately, as an unfunded mandate. But, you know, each municipality, the answer to that, you and I have had this conversation before, but the answer to that is that you would have to pass a separate resolution, just because the county, the county can only take care of the county tax, the village can take care of the village tax, and so on. So, it isn't really an unfunded mandate, because it only allows for each municipality and the school board to pass along that 10% savings, as the idea of, and again, you know, recruitment and retention are the two concepts that we're dealing with here. So, you know, I, I just want to mention that again, because we're farther along now than we ever have been in terms of this legislation. He seems to be setting a goal of 6,000 vetoes, so I'm not sure where that's going to fit into the, the concept of, you know, vetoing things, but it is getting, unfortunately, lumped into that category, and we're after, uh, you know, obviously Janet and Betty to, you know, try to send messages that this is not part of that same concept, because each local municipality would have to sign off on it and say, yes, we, we would have this for, for firefighters, so, um, anyway, that's one, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be interrupting here, I'm not, I'm just adding to what Harry said, there is an ongoing committee, and unfortunately, I'm part of it too, of retention and recruitment for by-county, both Essex and Clinton, and we're slowly getting into some of the things, like you mentioned, that tax breaks, and we're hoping to have something to do or get to hold of some, even some of the grocery trains, uh, I doubt whether we'll have much success, but those are the things we're looking at to try to help encourage more recruitment and retainings.
Well, something has to change, because if you, when I go to the dinners and you look around the room, there are a few young people, and there are an awful lot of people with an awful lot of experience, and, uh, I'll be nice about it, okay? And so, you know, you're really, something has to, for the future, it's just a volunteer concept. Uh, just to piggyback with that, I mentioned, we did pass a resolution, uh, congratulating Todd Jarvis and so on, and, uh, you know, uh, I don't know that he's going to be able to be there on, on Wednesday, but we have a gross, you know, resolution, a plaque and so on for, and for his road efforts. Um, all right, quickly, uh, sales taxes are back on track, we're back where we should be in terms of the estimates that we gave you, so it doesn't look as if we're going to be, uh, you know, below projections, and, and that's, that's a real jump from last year, as you can imagine, and we're up on the month-to-month too, so, you know, it's possible, I, I don't want you to count on this, I know every year, we kind of beat the projection, I don't know that that's going to happen, but it's only going to be better than the projection, uh, by at least equal to or better than the projection, so that, that's pretty good news. I don't know what you've decided on the retirement incentive, uh, if you're considering it. Uh, we went through the, uh, the whole process at the county level, and all I can tell you is that, you know, most of us insisted from the very beginning that it be budget neutral, and budget neutral means that it doesn't cost the county anything. And believe it or not, there were 240 people eligible to retire out of the 850 that are employed, and none of them met that criteria. Now, what I did, and this is not what the state did, but I added health insurance, because it's a cost, and, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't fit into the, the, uh, the state formula, but still, we have to pay an extra health insurance, uh, for the county, it's $20,000 a year, so you can't not count that as, as a fixed cost, so, in any event, but what we did was, there were people who, and I don't know whether this applies to anybody in the village, but there were people who still felt they met the criteria, and we set up individual meetings with those people. Now, have you guys, have you made a decision, are you, are you looking at that incentive for, for retirement?
No.
Nobody qualified.
Nobody qualified, okay, so, well, we, we had people that technically may have qualified, but, you know, add in the concept of health insurance, if, if just a minute, this is not the time where the county can go out and, and, you know, pick up an extra $20,000 for a family health fund. Uh, you've probably heard, uh, in terms of, uh, what's going on with Pfizer, I just wanted to mention that they're, they're looking at the concept of, um, trying to induce Pfizer not to demolish the buildings, no, it's not directly relative to you guys, but I'm sure you must, you may have some employees over there, and, and looking at, at giving them some tax breaks. And I, I don't know whether this is going to work or not, uh, whether you've heard anything about that, but this would be, uh, county, uh, school, uh, and actually Chezey already voted, I guess, to do it, uh, for, as, as a tax break, so that they would take the, the 1,028 building and they would give it a tax break, so at least there would not be an incentive to demolish the building, they would at least have a building that they could sell, because it could be to their advantage, of course, to, uh, you know, lower their taxes by, by having a vacant area, so that's one thing that, that is coming down the pipe. I'm not sure if all the municipalities, each one's going to have to vote on that individually, but it is a concept, and it's one for Rousas Point too, I mean, because they are now considering marketing it as just a building, not necessarily as a pharmaceutical, and that's, that's kind of a switch for Rousas Point, and, you know, we want to make sure that those buildings stay there in some kind of condition that they can be marketed. Akromax was a long shot, we had talked about that earlier, and, uh, you know, it seems unlikely at this point for the economy, the way it is, that it's going to change, but at least we would have a building, so, in any event, that, that's something that, uh, you know, it should be paying attention to, because it is going to affect the town's influence also. Um, you guys, I guess you got your figures for your eight per capita, uh, money is down about 5% from what I can see, is that, is that about what, which isn't draconian, it's just, you know, it's what it is. Uh, the county, however, is being hit with, now, we've gotten some figures on social services, uh, and probation, and it's just, we're, you know, set in figures. So, I don't know what's, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen, and, and it seems as if, uh, in the nursing home too, it seems as if, um, you know, somehow, we're going to have to make up an incredible budget shortfall, which indirectly impacts things that we might be able to do for towns and villages, so, I just, I don't know what to tell you, except that it is, it is an economic blizzard that's coming, and it's just as bad next year as it is this year. So, it, it would appear that we're in for some really hard times in terms of funding levels that are coming, state to county, county to town, town to village, or county to village. Um, I, I did, I did want to comment, as you know, I'm just finishing here, the airport, we did open, uh, with our new service, uh, the, the feedback initially has been quite good, uh, you know, Greg and I were talking before the meeting, and obviously, there is some pricing differentials depending on times and so on, but it's up about triple what it was, and, you know, a lot of the things that people don't realize, and it's $4.50 to the county for each person who flies on the plane, and so if we tripled that, almost $70,000 last year, so if we tripled that, that's $210,000, that's an incredible increase. And to follow up on something that Greg asked me about the last time I was here, a couple months ago, um, the parking issue. Uh, and, uh, we are, we are at, in the process of going out to Viv and actually, uh, trying to get, uh, and there are corporations that do this, they come in, they either build a facility or they run a facility, and they pay the county some money, so, maybe you've heard that already, but, uh, this is something that I think, you know, we've been talking about it, and, and if, I, we, what we don't want to do is cut off the flow of Canadian business, it's a, I mean, they pay a fortune up the doorbell, and so to come down here and park free, but we're at a point where you drive by and some of those cars have been there a long time, and so there has to be some, some cause-effect relationship, some deterrent, and so on, so, we may well be going out to Viv in the fall with somebody that's going to manage it for us and pay us some money out of the profits that come in. So, that's all I have, uh, but again, you know, any questions or comments or whatever, I'd be happy to, to respond, uh, just let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Let's say your names. No. Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Do anybody wish to address the board at this time? Yes. Do you, uh, wish to name and address? Trevor Kamash, 39 Moore Street. I've got some issues on Moore Street, right across the road from me. I was talking with, uh, one of the guys on the plane aboard in Oxford, it's through that trailer issue I have, he's probably well aware of it, and according to him, is the only way he can put a trailer back here, if the existing one burns. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, so, because I talked with, I talked with, uh, is it Glenn Car, Carter?
Carter.
Carter. And I've been dealing with him a little bit, and this is what he's telling me. And, I mean, there's no permits issued, there's nothing issued up there right now. All the work that's been done, the digging, I mean, if I'm correct, you've got to call Dig Save, Dig, Dig First, nothing's been done up there, he's dumped and stopped, and from this day on, I don't want to need a permit. And I'm tired of looking at garbage. Hey, I guess I can't answer your question, but Mickey, would you be able to?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the [inaudible]. And I mean, I mean, last, last Sunday, I watched my, the pictures, I had to drain the fuel bank, I have the pictures here, draining, draining the, the fuel tank on the ground. I mean, the way we're going now, our water source up there, in 25 years, we might be looking for a well. We can end up kerosene in the ground. This is what's going on, I got pictures of this.
If he's dumping kerosene on the ground, that's a DEC issue. Still control.
He's got, he's got that problem right now.
Well, if you saw him dump kerosene on the ground, you should have called DEC or state police or, or somebody. I mean, once it's done, it's done, but they can come in and test it. As far as permits goes, he does have a permit, we've gone through this, we've been up there, he is in compliance, and as far as Mr. Cutter's statement to you, and we talked about this...
No, I didn't have a chance to get up to you, I'm too busy.
I looked it up again in the village code, and nowheres can I find where you were stating to me that only by fire can everybody's trailer. The village code is quite clear that you can upgrade any existing single white trailer.
Yeah, but you can't say he's upgrading it, because he brought a trailer in, that's good. That's not upgraded.
If it's newer than what was there, if it's going to be in better condition when it's done, it, it's an upgrade. I can't determine whether a trailer is going to be, um, upgraded or not, he, he can bring another trailer in.
Now, he's got to stay away from the property lines, right?
Yeah, he did.
I have one question, I don't know if you guys can answer it, on the canal up there, does the village own that? I couldn't answer that either. Because I, according to... I don't believe so, but... According to two people I know that you do own it, Tacy says that you own it, and Patrick says you own it, I'm not sure, and that's why... I'd have to check on that, because I don't have this allergy.
Well, I mean, I got involved with that, of that issue again today. Um, according to the tax map, there's the property on Canal Street, and then the property on Moore Street, and there's one property lying down the center of those properties through that gap.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why they were, they were saying that the village owned that, I'm not...
Well, there's nothing in there that shows that the village owns anything, but the property lines are in dispute, there's Angel, garbage, or not, I don't say garbage, but trash in there, and one person is telling me he doesn't own it, the other guy says he owns it, I mean, somebody's going to have to survey something to figure out who owns a lot of that.
That is a myth, that is a lot of garbage found there. I'm pretty sure the village does own it, but I will check on that. Because I, because I, I asked Jean, she's been there a long time, that's what she said, the village owns it, and Joseph Patrick said the village...
Well, according to the tax map, there's, I didn't find anything that said the village owned anything up there, but that's the tax map.
You'll take a little bit of research to, uh, find out for sure, and I can't get back to you on that. So, I mean, that's where, that, if the village does own it, if it's the top of the bank, he's not the one that's standing here. I don't, that's why I, I got to ask that question. Yeah, I can't, I can't answer you on that one. Now, he has, you, you say he has one year, from when he got the permit, but how about the two months he worked before time without being stopped?
Two months?
Well, he tore the trailer all apart, he tore the road all up.
Uh, that was a separate issue with the trailer that he brought in there, he got a permit before he started that.
Now, and on the road, what's going to happen with that road there, being tore up? Who's going to be responsible to fix that road? Well, that's the village street. Yeah, and he repaved it last year, and now we, if you look at it, it's all the way tore up, all the way down to the marks. Brand new road shouldn't be like that. Somebody should be held, be held responsible for that road. If I go down with a set of plows, I drop them, I tear them up, they're going to send me a bill. It's a brand new road. I can't comment on that, because that's litigation, but we are... Because that, I mean, it is a brand new road. And I have one more issue. At the beginning of the street, is our street a one-way street or a two-way street? That's a, a two-way street. It's not a two-way street. We have a problem at the beginning. Is it Gaylord, the gay?
[inaudible].
No. You're talking about where all the vehicles are parked on the side? That's a gala.
Gala. You, you, if two vehicles meet, you can't meet two vehicles, somebody's got to stop. And I have one more issue. At the beginning of the street, is our street a one-way street or a two-way street?
That's a, a two-way street.
It's not a two-way street. We have a problem at the beginning. Is it Gaylord, the gay?
Boson.
No. Beginning.
Gaylord, yeah. Gaylord, yeah.
No. We're talking about where all the vehicles are parked on the side, that's a gala.
Yep, gala. You, if two vehicles meet, you can't meet two vehicles, somebody's gotta stop. And this is an ongoing problem, it's been going for a while.
I've asked him quite a few times about the parking.
Roadways have to be a certain width.
Yeah, but you can't meet two vehicles, you must stop.
That's something that the state police would have to enforce. The village itself cannot enforce laws.
It wouldn't be a village issue, because even your snowplow, your snowplow has an issue coming through there. They can't do it.
Yeah, we would, we would have an issue with that.
Because, I mean, I've seen one of your employees sat there and lay on the air horn for ten minutes. He came out and moved his vehicle. I watched this. That shouldn't be, you shouldn't have to do that.
Okay, we'll look into that. That's where we first turned on the street, or?
Uh, it's the second house, it's where Lurland used to stay.
They have to call the state police to.
Yeah, yeah. They have about seven vehicles.
We just have to move, but if they don't, we have both state police as well as U. N. A. police.
Yeah, but I'm trying to worry it's, if this is ongoing, I can see if it happened once in a while, I don't have a problem. But this, you go right now, you're gonna have the same problem. And on the weekends, it's worse, you got a whole vehicle out there. And you got the ambulance that comes up, somebody's coming down, somebody's gotta get it.
Because there's one time when the lady in the house that has the new siding on it, I was supposed to go pick somebody up, but she canceled on me. There was two ambulances right there on the road, I could not get by. And they would, they had enough people helping with her to where they could move the ambulance so I could get by. They had two right in a row, and I couldn't get by either way. And Ross's Point ambulance came, and then he turned around and left.
It's a, it's a big disaster there.
I mean.
It's not, it's not, it's not no more, I can see warning them, he's warning quite a bit, there's no more warning time. In the wintertime, it's, it's normal, they always gotta go around. Why should these guys have to go around at that time? Shouldn't have to. Or stop and blow a horn.
Fair enough, thanks for bringing your concerns to us.
I mean, I, I can see that, I've had enough of that. I mean, I can leave my vehicle out on the middle of the road, too, I enjoy that, get more grass. But my vehicle belongs to the driveway.
Okay, thanks. We will look into that, and we'll get back to you on that.
I have one more question. I really have a problem at the end. How do you take pictures of that bonfire? Do you, they had none of them this week, and I have fifteen of them. What do I have to do with it? I need to call private party?
You'd have to call the state police, you'd be able to call.
What do you consider a campfire?
A campfire, according to DEC regulations, is no larger than three foot diameter.
Oh.
Well, it can't be fifteen foot high, but.
I mean, I see it, I mean, that's another, that's another issue we have there, with the burning.
Well, there's no burning in the village.
He's outside.
He's in the town right there. You can have a campfire, but, you know, turns into a bonfire, that's a different issue.
Because he's close to the wells.
Then you gotta have permits and so on and so forth. Apparently, this goes on quite a bit.
Yeah.
Where is that?
It's on the far end.
Well, I guess, yeah, but I have to, I have to refer this to the town, right? Because that's in the town.
Well, he's got village, I think he has village water.
Correct. Within the corporate limits of the town.
It should be almost going there. That's, that's what I'm looking at, because I, because I, because our water source is close by it. He's the closest. This is, and I watch the trucks go up with the wood and.
Was that the last house on the street, on the left there?
Yeah, just to say he's in that.
Right away, he's probably in the village, it's south system.
I think it's all, I think it's all the, all the county. Just to say he's a softball hit, I'm not handling it. Okay, that's all I have for right now.
Well, thanks, I appreciate you coming to the meeting.
But down the street, if you could do something there, I would want, I'd appreciate that, making that. Or you don't have to fight to get around them, and two cars can't.
Well, if there is a congestion issue, we can look at, you know, parking or no parking on the street. What can we work on, and we could do it.
I mean, this is, this is twenty-four seven, and sometimes it's not one street. I've lived, I've lived there long enough now, I've been here twenty-six years, and the last, since he's been there, this has been long.
Okay, I'll definitely get back to you on that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, well, again, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
If you have any concerns, don't hesitate to tell them. I think I, I think you did the wrong direction, you asked where the school was.
I tried to come, I tried to come last week, but last time around, I couldn't make it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna have to, goodnight, all.
No.
He's gonna laugh. Oh, gee, sorry.
Thanks.
What is he talking about? Where's the street, Moore Street? The fire department know about that. They call, and I'll have to find out.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Anybody else want to take a shot? Um, basically, I've been chasing after grass. I think we've narrowed it down to the ones that are, they're vacant places, in foreclosure, or under, under the hands of mortgage companies. Get any answer from them. I know last month, he said we'd wait a month, and then if you wanna put it out, the bid with the grass gotten cleaned up, that's about the only way it's gonna happen. I've talked to the judges about that. If I issue a citation to have them in court, and they say they're living in Texas or somewheres else, they have no authority to extradate them, basically. I mean, you know, so for the sake of getting it done, and the quickest, most economical, I would suggest that you call a landscape company, or, you know, someone that's insured, have them cut it, clean it up. And if they have to do it twice, when you put it under taxes, the village is gonna get repaid to the gallon, supposedly. That's the only, I've had, three of them I've gotten in court. It's taken a while for the process to go through. They've all gone in our favor so far, you know. But it's costing, it's expensive, and it's planned to do. Now I'm onto other things, you know, so much grass, there's trash, Moore Street, everything happened to the Moore Street issue. I got a house up there that's been torn down, our garage, it fell down two months ago. And, you know, two land contracts later, you find the person you need to deal with, so. But that's basically it.
Thanks, everybody, we are gonna proceed with those things, but it's gonna be late in the summer, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have the list that I generated, you all got copies of it. I've gotten a few more since then, Larry has them, and we've talked about it, but.
Right now, we have nine.
It's predominantly the, the people are gone, you know, they either walk away from the properties, or they're out of state, lost their jobs, or whatever. So, and the lawns are hayfields, so it's definitely a problem.
Well, thanks, Mickey, and don't give up.
Oh, no. Secure economy.
Just surprised if the realtors won't let that go on.
No, they won't do anything until they want a letter from me saying that there are no violations of the property so they can have their closing. And I've called a couple of the local ones, and I've explained that to them, and it doesn't seem to faze them. But I do know that when the day comes and I've got a notice of violation, I'm not gonna back down on them. And they're getting their commission to sell it, they should make sure the properties are, you know, a couple of years.
I came to live, I own one of them. I've talked a couple of them.
Yeah, same thing.
You at all.
Well, I've talked along the other way, too.
But, you know, they have no interest in cutting the grass.
So the property owners responsibility, I was told, not the realtor.
They're both shooting themselves in the foot, then. If I'm the property owner, I wanna sell my property, I want it to be presentable. If I'm a realtor trying to sell it, you know, I'd wanna make sure that the property owner needed presentable. And that's just, that's what I'm saying.
But I think, like, where's the, some of them, or they're the ones that are not even around, and they don't care, so, you know.
I don't have anything to report, so we're going to trust the Charlie.
I really don't have much of anything. There's a zoning board meeting Wednesday night regarding property downtown. I missed the last meeting, I was unable to attend it. This is public hearing for Mr. Charlie's property. And other than that, just wanted to tell Larry that you guys are doing a great job around town. I see a lot of different things are getting done, and it looks good. So, thank them.
Yeah, that's just, the zoning board asked the last meeting, is the village doing anything as far as their training requirements, and look at that. You know, we talked about different things, and, you know, they're sort of looking to see what's going on with the village.
Oh, okay. I didn't really pursue that, I didn't, I haven't really had time. I know you gave me the little bit of information, so.
Well, there was one thing this coming weekend at the Albany Law School, but that's, you know, that's more for attorneys looking, they gotta have their continuing legal credits and all that, which, I mean, you can get zoning credits for, but, you know, really, it's the best place to go. And I know they, they talked about it the last two meetings now, so if I don't ask the question, you're gonna be shocked.
Yeah, I was concerned about that also, when, when I was down in Potstown last year, they were saying that something would be approved soon for online training, but I don't know for sure whether it actually went through or not. But that's one thing I wanna check on, because it's probably the easiest thing for people to do. It's good if you know there's something alive, but, you know, if it's in Albany, or Syracuse, it's not likely that somebody's gonna wanna go there. They're always going to leak, so if somebody works, it's difficult.
The only place you're gonna have this year is in Lake Placid this fall, the Plating Association. I don't think the county's gonna do anything, they haven't done anything in the past two years, so.
Yeah, it is important training, it is required, and we are gonna try to get more people to participate, so. Get a chance tonight, you probably check on that, see if they do that, allow online training for that.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Trustee Martin?
Uh, just to reiterate a news release that was in the local newspaper. Notice to all residents of the Village of Champlain with pools. I guess I'll note this one, whether it's probably appropriate. Please be advised that residents who fill their swimming pools with more than five thousand gallons of village water must call the village office first so that the correct amount of gallons used to calculate the sewer credit can be verified by the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works can be reached at five one eight two nine eight eight six four nine, or two nine eight four one five two. Residents may call the village office at two nine eight four one five two if they have any questions or need further information. I'd like to thank Terry and Jimmy for their work on the sander back there. They use scrap materials for, or from the wastewater plant, made the sewer, or, made the sander much more efficient while protecting the new truck from the effects of sand and salt buildup. Thanks for their attention to detail and cost savings to the village. A NISERTA representative did a review of the village properties on June twenty-fourth. The village office, garage, water plant, and wastewater plant were examined to see where we could save some money on our gas and electric costs. We should have a report from this inspection shortly. And the engineering firm of Barton and LeJudas, who is handling our shared management, asset management plan, is also involved in this, in this inspection to see if we can realize some savings in our electricity and our, and our gas bills for the, for the village properties. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Trustee Charlie?
Reiterate, with those, Greg, you said I haven't got back to look at the sander, but I don't understand what was done to it. So I was, I truly do believe that in-house, it does save a bunch of money, I appreciate that. And I have a notice of public meeting, I just wanna bring everybody's attention. A meeting is being scheduled by the Village of Champlain, Village of Ross's Point, and the Town of Champlain for Wednesday. Next week, July fourteenth, two thousand, excuse me, this Wednesday, July fourteenth, two thousand and ten, at seven P. M. At Town of Champlain, Route Nine, Champlain, New York. This is to review and discuss the final draft of the Public Water and Sewer Shared Landspace Services and Asset Management Plan, which is what Greg referred to from the engineering firm of Barton and LeJudas. So this meeting is open to the public, all are welcome to attend. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Trustee Terry?
I have part of a report from last month, just that the czar went very well. And thanks to the crew, the streets looked great for the parade, we had an unbelievable turnout, perfect weather, great success in raising money, so that was very good. And I did get a chance to look at the sander, the guys were very proud of the work, and they should be. It was very nice, using all the pieces and soldering it together, so it's very effective. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have the report for the treasurer.
Um, I wanted to copy with the June census record report.
Two items.
Just a second, I got something else.
The purchase requisitions. One is culvert for Elm Street, twelve-inch culvert, and it cost six thousand, six hundred, six thousand eight hundred sixty-eight. And ten DI culvert boxes for Elm Street, and it cost four thousand two hundred, uh, four, well, four hundred, four thousand two hundred and seventy. So I'd like to make motion to pay these purchase requisitions. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any discussion?
Uh, for the culvert for Elm, do we have other quotes on that?
That is the, that is the county, the county was fifty-six cents more. That's the cheapest I've been given, I got it through the state.
You just have to have it documented, the other prices, don't you?
I have to do that.
Just make sure it gets attached to it. It's a Janus thing, I stick with that.
I need the state contract.
The state contract, you don't have to vote.
No, but you still have to have your prices on here.
Not the state.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you two, so for the discussion, Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
And then we're aye.
Um, we also have water and soil going this month. Um, our water per quarter is fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five, fifty-eight. And sewer total was eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, there we go.
Wow.
Okay, at this time, entertain motion to pay the warrant.
So I have more, Bill Ted. Gotta put Larry going to train first.
Yeah, so we have any of those, it's what we can do.
Then we have to add it to one.
Okay. Okay, we'll leave it. Let's do that first, any other motions for Larry to attend. Trenching and excavations class, which will be at Plasford on July twenty-seventh.
Sumo.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by the same eye.
Aye.
And a pose, and motion is carried, and we're gonna add that to the warrant, there's another?
Yes, no, we need to add, um, seven five Derek dollars for Larry to attend training at Plasford on June twenty-seventh, to come out of F. nine zero eight nine point eight.
Okay, so.
Nine zero what?
Eight nine point eight.
So any motion to approve the warrant with that, uh, issue?
She has another one, too, don't she? Oh. Sumo.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? If not, Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
And Laura, aye.
Yes, Mark.
You got other four of the superintendent?
Uh, you have my work log in front of you. Okay, I ordered the boxes and the culverts, and they're on their way, it'll only take three weeks, then the box is up. It was like a thirty-five hundred dollar saving. And they're soon to supply. We placed the culvert up on their railroad track, and right now, we're getting everything ready to get the beat, start digging as soon as my box is ready. Play on new lawns tomorrow, I've got some community service kids cleaning all the sod, and I rock myself, so.
I'll tell them about that this morning.
Long to mention, I forgot, thank you for this, still need to, so.
Keep moving forward, the good ones, the culvert, it's done in the boxes, that's gotta get done.
So this culvert's cat goes the other way?
All new, yeah, yes. On the corner of the Kimface Building by John Conley's, all the way down to fire station.
I want you to read the correspondence.
Uh, letter to Richard McKay regarding water meter maintenance by the village. Correspondence from Earl Cockney regarding Beverly Kennedy's age exemption under property tax. Correspondence from near state charter transportation regarding the CHIPS funding. Correspondence from Earl Property regarding omitted tax passes on the tax vote of the village. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department to Cedar Street residents regarding furrow cats. Various violation notices from Code's Officer Tetra. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department regarding disaster preparedness and animal sheltering. Correspondence from Plin County Civil Service regarding payroll certification. Letter to Jet Track regarding GPS devices. Correspondence from Champlain Fire District regarding fire hydrants. Correspondence from Gorman Group regarding Elm Street reclamation. Letter from Don Wayne Patterson and memo from Deputy Kirk Parkholm regarding re, reloaded water and sewer first property at eleven sixty and eleven sixty-two Main Street. Memo from Deputy Kirk Parkholm regarding meter reading correction for Alan Pawcat, property at twelve forty-nine Route Nine, Main Street. Correspondence from Plin County Civil Service regarding upcoming meeting relative to Plin, to civil service rule changes. Letter to Code's Officer Tetra regarding board pool given to Mikey Cat to connect your village water and sewer system. Letter to Maureen Kennedy regarding denial of sewer repair compensation request by her. Letter to World Warehouse regarding denial of one-time sewer credit request.
In the whole business, we have G S C, G S A meter, uh, we're still investigating that, Larry's looking to decide the meter that we need, and, uh, we wanna make sure we put the right meter in this time and do it once, so we're still investigating that. Uh, anyone else have any additional in the business? Uh, done, we have, uh, adjustment to Alan Pawcat's meter reading, uh, I don't think he has got with that. So we're getting a motion to, uh, adjust that.
I'll make that motion for justice in this court.
Hey, you have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Think this is pretty straightforward.
It was strictly a clerical.
It was mistaken account. So. Send it over there.
Sixty-two eighty-six.
Well, the, the adjustment is, yeah, could you make, uh, reference to that, and it'll take the motion done?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Sixty-two eighty-six.
Okay, so the.
We're adjusting the bill from one ninety-nine twenty to one thirty-six thirty-four.
Exactly, so if you adjusted that amount, up to sixty-two dollars and six cents, plus, do a, do a report.
Okay, no further discussion, but Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
And then we're aye. Another item we have is resolution for adjustment of real property tax collection, we have someone has the H, mm-hmm. Exemption, I'm calling that, senior citizen exemption, I guess, or. She should be under this, and this is the, uh, you have, you have to read this one, the, uh, resolution, and.
Tell me to read it? You should.
You should, you should read it.
Resolution, Real Property Tax Correction, Beverly E. Kennedy, um, whereas property located at eighteen Moore Street, Champlain, New York, with tax map number eighteen dash fifteen, uh, eighteen point one five dash three dash thirty is owned by Beverly Kennedy, whereas Village of Champlain has been notified by Plin County Real Property Office, that section five hundred and fifty, subdivision two, paragraph B of Rural Property Tax Law, states an entity, an entry which is mathematical error present in the complication of a partial exemption is classified, is classified as clerical error, and whereas in this particular case, parcel eighteen point one five dash three dash thirty, the H exemption was incorrectly calculated on two thousand and ten village tax roll. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Village of Champlain vote of trustees at the regular meeting held on May, Monday, June, July twelfth, two thousand and ten, hereby approve this correction and approve this correction for parcel eighteen point fifteen dash three dash thirty, Beverly E. Kennedy located at eighteen Moore Street.
Okay, any motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make motion to approve the resolution, that's good.
You have a second? Any discussion? All right, um, this is Trustee Charlie.
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Charlie?
Aye.
And then we're aye. The other item that we have is, uh, whether we want to spend additional money to completely pave for a policy. In looking back at what we did on Prospect, we're making a seamless street, I think we'll all agree, I think that's probably a good idea, so. Somebody would like to make a motion to do the entire street, or to regrind, um, I forget that, okay?
Uh, I make a motion that we do the reclamation, um, and do the full street, do everything that was given on, uh, by the Gorman Group, and have that street be done, and have it done right.
Okay, you have a second?
I have a second, let me.
Okay, any discussion? My, my only comment is, I, I think the last one we did like this turned out very well, and I'm hoping we get a street to last again, like the other ones. Uh, okay, I guess all in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we can do a kind of paving this year. And I have another, uh, a, a letter, which I'm sure you read, from Don Patterson, I, I really don't think there's anything to vote on, uh. We'll have to give him back an explanation, but he, he thinks because, you know, he's using, he isn't using any water, he doesn't have to pay the, uh, the service fee for water, so, which of course, everyone in the village has to pay, so, I, I don't really think there's anything to vote on, I guess, it's pretty, pretty clear cut, I mean, anyone in the village has, uh, it's a selling point that you are connected to, to, uh, village water and sewer, and that's the decreted cost of, uh, the overhead of running the system, so, uh, I don't, I don't really know what he's wanted us to do here.
Probably just a letter response from the board.
I don't know, I, we all know that water and sewer hasn't been used, it's the service fee that.
As long as there's a structure on the property, it stays intact.
Right, yes, I don't think I have any.
The little store in Elm Street is closed this year, isn't it?
We charge that, for, for, as long as he has a hook on. Okay, and, uh, the last item, uh, I'd like to go into, uh.
Jack, can I interrupt you a second though? That's not a good one, Sid. You need to make a motion to put the lawns down.
Oops, yep. Okay, uh, I think Larry has contacted, uh, who is it?
I got a hold of a private contractor.
Okay, and they're insured, right?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we all wanna go ahead and get those moved, I know there was some discussion originally about, uh, well, we should make a motion, I don't know, say it, I think. Yeah, you have a motion to, you have to contract out for more lawns that have been not moved for a specified amount of time, we added to tax rules?
These are ones in three days.
Yes, they've, they've had thirty days, they haven't.
Make that motion. Make the motion to re, uh, look at a private contractor to clean up the delinquent, uh, lines entering the village.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
I just wanted to say that I, I agree with Greg there, um, we need somebody that will charge a commercial rate, it's, it's not really our business to get into that, if they run into, hit a plane with a mower or something, or somebody complains they damaged their house, it's not really directly involving us, but I think that's quite far, the thing is, we need two things, and, uh, we don't have any arguments about rates or anything like that, it's gonna be somebody commercial, who does this stuff commercially, and some of these are, I'm sure Greg is noticing them, and I'm sure you have too, you're talking hate fields here. I don't, it's gonna take more than a lawnmower.
This is gonna be, Derek, it'll be all clean and all the levers will be taken away, it's building, it's gonna look just like a lawn this time.
Well, it's a roll, but.
We'll close for we.
Put on the tax rules, that way we don't tie up anybody during the summer, that's another benefit I think of doing with this, uh. Okay, now this, is there any other discussion? Uh, okay, all in favor, seeing how those lawns moved, signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried, and we just have, I need the, uh, executive session to go with a newly contracted before we vote on it, uh, and we'll come back in session and vote on that. Okay, uh, someone like to make a motion to that effect? You have a second?
Second.
You're all in favor?
All ayes.
All opposed? Okay, should we take two?
Why does this say, it's not supposed to say attention?
He told me to come to the village, though. Cause he was, he was at the town.
Tim gave it to you?
Huh? Tim, the assessor, yeah.
No, it's, you should have given it to John, when he go to fire district. Yeah. That's go to fire also.
When you're gonna, when you're gonna be Thursday?
Yeah.
Bring the.
I can.
Bring the best thing back.
But that's where it has to go, it has to go to that.
Well, he told me to bring your hair, so. Are you in, see what it was?
Cause it says, cause it says the Village of Champlain, care of the Village of Champlain, why does it?
Well, obviously, they think we're still involved.
Okay, I'll get care of it.